Good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock and time to call to order this meeting of the Gallatin City Council for April 2nd, 2019. Welcome, everyone. We begin the meeting like we do each meeting with the invocation, the pledge of allegiance. This evening, Councilman Overton is going to offer the invocation and Councilman Fennell will lead in the pledge. If you'll stand with me, please.
Let us pray. Dear the Father, thank you so much for this beautiful day and thank you, Lord, for bringing us together and help us that we'll make the right decisions as this night goes on. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Kittrell, if you'd call the roll for us, please. Vice Mayor Camp.
Present.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Mr. Phan.
Present.
Mr. Fennell.
Here.
Mr. Hayes.
Present.
Ms. Love.
Here.
And Mr. Overton.
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum. Thank you. Next, well, there are no minutes provided this evening, so we'll move on to public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting where you can come forward and address any item that is on the agenda tonight, share your concerns if it's related to that. At the end of the meeting, we'll have public recognition on non-agenda-related items. So there'll also be an opportunity at the end of the meeting if you'd like to speak as well. But right now, public recognition on agenda-related items is open.
My name is Joe DeBoer and I live at 10007 Hart Street, Gallatin, Tennessee. I rise to speak on the item number eight with regard to the second reading of the ordinance, allowing the mayor to negotiate the purchase of three properties. I share the same thoughts and concerns that Councilman Hayes and Vice Mayor Camp have with regard to buying the properties, but they don't make it no more. And I think we'd be wise to go ahead and purchase the properties for what we need there. We need some open spaces and I think this would be a good project for the city. It is not, I repeat, it is not in chronological order as things we would want to do things, but you don't get this opportunity but so often. So I would suggest that you all vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeBoer. Is there anyone else wishing to speak this evening under public recognition on agenda-related items? If so, come forward at this time. And I see no one indicating that they wish to speak, so I'll move on to Mayor's comments. And I've been asked, we actually have a street closure application here and we do have people in attendance for this, so with this council's permission, I'll go ahead and present it to you all to support. So this is a road closure for 4-19, 2019, and the road closure is from the courthouse to Gallatin First United Methodist Church. It does close Main Street from 11:30 until 1:00 p.m. That happens on Good Friday and it's for the reenactment of the crucifixion done by the United Methodist Church. So, and it's technically, it says in front of courthouse to Foster Avenue. All the signatures are here.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. It is approved and you may leave. You are very, very welcome. I do have some things for the council this evening. I do want to say a big thank you for those of you who attended last night with GNRC to discuss the update of our comprehensive plan. I hope the public is looking forward to that and we have indication that we will have good participation with that, so we're very excited about it. Tomorrow night, John Isbell is going to be presenting here in council chambers a presentation about the reappraisal process to answer people's questions, explain how it's done, explain why it's done, and share that information. So that's from 5 until 7 here in council chambers. It is open to the public. Tomorrow is the youth job fair and these are, while anyone can attend, this is for primarily youth-seeking summer employment and that happens at the American Job Center from 3 until 7 tomorrow afternoon.
Thursday.
Huh? I'm sorry, Thursday. I'm not looking at my dates. Thursday, April 4th, 3 until 7. On Friday and Saturday is the Market in the Park at Triple Creek Pavilion. Also, this Saturday is the Walk Across Sumner Superhero 5K and Fun Run, starting in the Civic Center parking lot at 7:30. And there's an open house at the Sumner County Museum this Saturday. It's the opening day for Bledsoe Fort, Wynwood, Hawthorne Hill, and the Brattle House. And there is a mega purse sale benefiting hats on the Airport Road, so I know that everyone here will rush to that. So I think that's all for the week. Some of the things I want to make you aware of, City Hall is being painted on the exterior. I hope you've had an opportunity to see the beautiful flowers out front. Thank Alicia Wilburn for those. I don't think I've ever seen the gardens in front of City Hall ever look so nice. So it's being painted tomorrow. The back of the building will be closed. Access will be challenging back there, but you will be able to get in the building just properly in that park there. I did also want to advise this council, and we checked that we don't need the council's approval on this, but County Executive Holt and property assessor Isbell both asked for an alternate for the Board of Equalization, and so I have submitted to them the name of Radford Garrett so that this council is aware of that. Want to mention again, we mentioned it at the work session, but I want to mention it again for the public, the police department had their annual awards last week and recognized several civilians, some citizens, and also police officers for their accomplishments in the past year. Also, the Gallatin Fire Department held a very impressive celebration of 24 new graduates who are joining the Gallatin Fire Department. That happened last week as well. And I think, oh, final thing. After this meeting tonight, we will be down at Phillies announcing the lineup for the Fire on the Water Festival. So when you leave the meeting tonight, please come down there and join us if you'd like to, or watch it on Facebook Live. We'll be announcing there as well. Hope you'll have the opportunity to join us. That concludes Mayor's comments. It moves us now into the regular agenda, and the first item on the regular agenda is second reading of ordinance 01903-11. And Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is second reading on appropriating insurance recovery in the amount of $3,154 for the undersigned fund balance of the general fund for repair of damage to a vehicle maintenance garage door, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Fennell. Is there any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 01903-11. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item number two is second reading on ordinance 01903-12. Councilwoman Love.
Thanks, Mayor. This is an ordinance awarding bid and authorizing funds in the total amount of $2,236,520 from gas system revenue bond sales series 2019 for 2019 annual gas line construction in various areas of the city. I so move.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 01903-12. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Passes unanimously. Item three is second reading on ordinance 01903-13. Councilman Hayes.
Yes, this is an ordinance appropriating $500 from revenue received from the Sumner County Juvenile Court collection for damage to soccer fields at Rogers Field on Station Camp. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Phan. Is there any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 01903-13. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, indicate by saying no. Passes unanimously. Item four is second reading on ordinance 01903-14. Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating $11,223.59 for revenue received by the signed shop for the sale of materials. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Fennell. Any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 01903-14. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. Item five is second reading on ordinance 01903-15. Councilman Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating $50,000 for the 2019 recycling equipment grant purchase of a used roll-off truck, and motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilman Hayes. Is there any discussion? It's second reading of ordinance 01903-15. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. Item six is second reading on ordinance 01903-16. Councilman Phan.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance appropriating $5,000 from Parks and Recreation Miracle Field donations to marketing of liquor related. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Phan, second by Councilwoman Love. Is there any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 01903-16. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Passes unanimously. Item seven is second reading on ordinance 01903-17. Councilwoman Love.
No, relax.
Sit back and listen.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin approving an amendment to the Gallatin zoning ordinance, Article 2, Section 02.02. Definitions, Article 3.00. Use classification, Section 03.02. Listing of activity classifications, Section 03.05. Residential activities, class and type, Section 03.07. Commercial activities, class and types, Section 3.08. Manufacturing activities, class and types, Article 8. Provisions for commercial districts, Section 8.01. Intent and purpose of the core commercial district, Section 8.03. Intent and purpose of commercial general district, and Article 9. Provisions for industrial districts, Section 9.01. General purposes and intent of industrial districts, Section 9.02. Intent and purposes of the industrial restrictive district, and Section 9.03. Intent and purposes of the industrial general district to modify the permitted uses, permitted uses with conditions, conditional uses and prohibited uses, and amending Article 15. Administration and enforcement, Section 15.06. Conditional use permits authorizing the revisions to be made on the zoning ordinance, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severity and providing for an effective date. I so move.
Is that a second? Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion on any detail of that? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. Item eight is second reading on ordinance 01903-19. Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate the purchase of three properties. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilwoman Love. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we defer.
A motion to defer?
I'll send it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to defer, and so do you want to discuss the deferral or vote on it?
Yeah, the reason I'd like to do that is I'd kind of like to see us vote on these all three separately, so that's the reason I want to defer it and maybe we can discuss it at our next committee meeting.
Okay. I will warn y'all, we should have about a five-hour committee meeting next week, so be ready. We have some lengthy stuff on there, but we'll add this to it if this passes for deferral. All in favor of deferring, please say aye. Opposed, please say no.
No.
Okay, I take that as a six in favor of deferring, one opposed to deferring. Is that accurate? All right. Deferral carries. Moving on to first reading on ordinance number 1904-20 by Vice Mayor Camp.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating $12,266.67 for revenue, from revenue received from insurance of a damaged vehicle. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Camp, second by Councilman Phan, I think. Hayes? Okay, sorry. Hayes, second vote, Councilman Hayes. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Does pass unanimously. That concludes the regular agenda. Brings us now to other business. Anyone have other business? Ms. Kittrell?
Mayor, I have a certificate of compliance. This is a liquor store that is being sold and this is a process they must follow. There is a few little glitches. I would defer to our city attorney on this. She has some information.
Yeah, I think the issue is with residency and our ordinance requires, has a residency requirement, but the state law has overruled that and said that is not constitutional. So we need to amend our code, but in the interim, I would advise that we follow state law.
So that being said, they can vote on this tonight.
Would they amend?
As is.
Okay. I'll give you the new owners or A&amp;D, Inc., doing business as Plantation Fine Wine and Spirits. So they have met the other requirements, which they have to run an article in a newspaper for three consecutive issues. They have done that and they have paid their fees.
I'll approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Overton, second by Councilwoman Love. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. It is approved unanimously.
Last week, the council ordered two show cause hearings for April 23rd for properties at 361 St. Luke Place and 410 Pace Street, and those were set for April 23rd and that date needs to be changed to May the 7th. I just need a motion and a vote by this council to change that date.
Motion to change that date. Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Overton. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? It is changed.
Thank you.
Anything else from council? Anyone?
You beat me to it, but I wanted to commend Zach and Alicia Wilburn for making the City Hall a showplace of Gallatin this week. Looks gorgeous.
The tulips are so pretty and hopefully the paint's going to make it, the building look even better. Anyone else? Do y'all have something? Okay, I see no other business, so we now move to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. If you have something you'd like to address that's not on the agenda, it's your time to do it. Come on up. Give us your address and your phone, uh, your name and your address. We don't want your phone number, sorry.
Well, all right, we're going to have a discussion about the address here just in a minute.
About what?
About the address. I own a, I own a house.
Okay, we need your, we need your name.
Oh, my name, Frank Arias, okay. Am I ready now?
Yeah, and your address.
Because you guys got all these rules and I'm just, you know, I'm an old retired military guy.
We won't make it too hard on you.
Well, I would harder myself, okay? I own a house on 144 Sunset Drive in Gallatin, Tennessee. And I went to go up and find out where I could, where I voted for the city of Gallatin. And they told me because I live on Harden Street that I couldn't do that. Well, this paper here, it's not a whole lot of proof, but it's proof to me. I got this paper about Mount Juliet being beat by Gallatin two weeks in a row. Two weeks. And that's not, that's not the proof that I can get you, but I can also go down to the Veterans Administration and get a record where the postman was mailing my VA medicine back to the VA and said, "There's nobody living here at that address." I went to the postmaster and he knew exactly who it was. Now, here's the, here's the issue. I'm a Vietnam vet and that don't make, that don't make me nobody, but it makes me a patriot of this country. And my right for you to tell me that I have to mail that up there and after the experiences I've had, I don't, I don't think so. Now, I'm not going to let this go. I want you to know, I'm one hard-headed old sergeant and I know right from right and I know wrong from wrong. You guys can sit up there in your, in your world and tell me how I got a vote and where I got a vote? I don't think so. When you guys said the pledge of allegiance to the flag, what did it all say? Liberty and justice for all. Well, my name is all.
Okay, Ms. Arias.
Oh, hold on just a minute. I'm not done, ma'am. Well, hold on. I got one, that's where I'm at, I'm at. I'm not going to let die. I'm not going to let it die. If I have to get a lawyer, I will not let it die. Now, the good, the good thing that I want to say, will Mr. Gregory stand up?
Ms. Arias.
That gentleman, that gentleman right there, I had a problem. I went up there and told him what the problem was. He said, "I'll come out and look at it." He come out and looked at it and immediately had it fixed. No argument, no, "Oh, well, you know," but no. Now, that there represents the city better than all you guys up there. Now, I want you to know, wait a minute, don't know.
Hey.
Hey, 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 hey.
Sir, you're speaking.
Hey, 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 got nothing to do with it. I don't eat hay.
Time out, time out.
Well, I don't, I don't do timeouts either.
Yes, you do, I recognize.
Well, okay.
Sir, sir, sir. Hey, 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 hey. Hey, 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 hey. Let's just keep this on public comments. I do want to answer your question about voting. I think I know what he's talking about. May I speak now?
I think so.
Okay, thank you.
If you've got something good to say, let's go ahead.
Well, you haven't, but I'm.
Oh, yes, I have. I'm an American.
Okay, let me speak.
And anybody up here, how many up, well, let me ask you one more question.
No.
How many more people up here that are on this council that were in the military?
I was.
Everybody raise your hand that was on the military.
Sir, this is, this is not a poll and it's non-interaction. I'm going to answer your question now. Please don't interrupt me. I think you were asking, I think you were complaining about being able to exercise property rights votes, which we do allow in the city of Gallatin. However.
I got to mail them in.
The issue is not with us, it is with the Election Commission. The Election Commission is the one that sets the rules on how you vote. No one sitting up here has anything to do with that.
Well, somebody lied up the Election Commission.
That is the Sumner County Election Commission.
Well, I went up there.
And Ms. Haumacalli, do you have anything that you know different about that?
You guys did, they told me you guys passed something that a lot of others, a lot of the other towns passed, that if you live outside the county and you live and you own a house in Gallatin.
We allow property rights votes, which a lot of cities don't. So we do allow that. You don't have to live here to vote, but you have to own property here. And a lot of cities don't allow property rights votes, but the way that the Election Commission has determined to let those happen is through that absentee vote process. And, and, and so there are.
He's lying.
Yeah.
Because I went to the Election Commission first.
Well, Lori actually is the director over there and I would suggest that you set an appointment with her and explain to her what you've explained to us.
I've already had an appointment and I've, you know, it's come here, go there. This, this year, this is like a five-mile run when I was in the Army. You never get to the end.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda-related items
Good evening. Can I hand out something?
Certainly. Introduce yourself and give your address.
Okay, my name is Jonathan Lindberg. And do you need an address?
Please.
Okay. 958 Harborview Drive, Memphis, Tennessee. I am the CEO of Adult Teen Challenge with Campus in Memphis. We are a faith-based discipleship program, residential program, and we are looking to open a facility in middle Tennessee and we have taken a lease out on the property of 565 South Water Street. And if I can hand these packets out.
Would you tell me your name one more time? I was writing down her address and didn't get your name.
Jonathan Lindberg.
Thank you.
We have met with and talked with Mr. McCord with the planning committee and also Mr. Stewart with Coats, and I am told that we are needing insight from the members of the council here on the use of this property, getting a zoning code that would allow us to have a residential operation at 565 South Water Street.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lindberg.
Lindberg.
Lindberg. I believe Mr. McCord advised you to come to the council. I believe there is an issue in that this property that they have leased does not allow for residential facilities. However, this facility does have people that stay at the treatment facility, and so he was trying to garner some guidance from this. Ms. Haumacalli has advised that the planning commission is the proper channel through which to go. Bill, did you want to clarify anything on this about what you're seeking or?
It's really unclear. Bill McCord's a city planner. It's really unclear specifically what they are wanting to operate. Now, there is a statute that needs to be, we need to look into a little more detailed 1324101 and the sequence to determine whether or not that trumps our zoning regulations for this type of activity for persons with disabilities. I don't know if that it does. I'm not at a point now where I would be willing to make an interpretation without discussing it with our city attorney and perhaps others. It is in a commercial zoning district. Commercial zoning district does not allow a group home or treatment facility of this type. We do allow this type of activity for licensed facilities and Mr. Lindberg had told me this is not a licensed facility, so it's really a group home treatment center in a CS district, which we don't list in our zoning code. So I advised, Mr. Lindberg was pretty adamant about wanting to speak with the council and I said, "Well, you have every right to do so," and that's the reason he's here. So he certainly can go to the planning commission and the planning commission can have a discussion about this as well.
Counsel, any thoughts or anything that you want to offer?
If I can just clarify, it is not a treatment center. It's a discipleship program. It's a faith-based ministry.
Okay, thank you.
And as well, we did meet with Mr. McCord's office back in November before we took the lease on the property, and I do have the notes from that meeting, and on that note it says that no change of use was required at that time. And so we went ahead with the lease on the property based off of the insight from the planning office, and I've got those notes right here that we had a meeting on November 8th, 2018.
Counsel, anything?
This is the first we've seen of it.
I know, I mean, there's nothing that you can do, but, but you're a prize.
They have to go through planning, planning commissions to get it resolved instead of going through us to do that, so.
Well, we've met with them twice already and, and again, we met with them November 8th before we took lease on the property to make sure that we wouldn't have to go through all of this, and at that time, none of this was raised. As a matter of fact, on the notes, it says, "No changes needed." And so that's, that's what's brought us here today. We had our second meeting last week to get code approval and we were told that zoning now is an issue.
Would that have to go through planning commission?
It doesn't meet zoning right now, is what Mr. McCord is saying, so it would go through the planning commission.
Yeah, so you're, I mean, it wouldn't go through this body, it would go through planning commission, that's where he would be.
Well, and I think the concern that he's raising is that in their preliminary meeting back in November in the discussion, that a planning staff person did not let them know that there could be an issue and so they proceeded forward.
Well, I guess that's my question.
That's my question as well, because we wouldn't have taken the lease on the property and put nearly $10,000 into the lease up to this point without that green light from both the code and from the planning department at that time. Now, Mr. McCord wasn't in that meeting, but the, but the planning committee or the planning office was represented there.
All right. I just got one question.
Yes, sir.
Maybe I missed it and I'll apologize if I did. The teens that need rehabbing, or did you say they're disabled or what?
No, sir. It's a discipleship program for adult men dealing with life-controlling issues, and so anything from gambling, internet addiction, drugs and alcohol is a part of it. It is a residential program and we've got a 45-year history in Memphis of working with individuals. It's Christ-centered, it's a discipleship. It's Christ-centered, it's a discipleship approach, there's, it's not a medical facility, it's not a treatment center. It's dealing with the person. You can see a little bit of the description on that sheet.
Would it also involve people that's had felonies or misdemeanors?
There are people that come through the program that would have that, yes.
Okay.
Could I ask you why you chose Gallatin for this?
We looked throughout middle Tennessee, and this property here really kind of fit all of what we were looking for in a facility. We wanted to be a part of a community. We've already joined the Chamber of Commerce. Our campus in Memphis is right in the heart of the city, right in the middle of, midtown, and we believe strongly in being a part of the community, and we felt that the opportunity here in Gallatin was there for us with this property.
Did you look in other areas besides Gallatin?
We did.
Did you approach anybody about putting your facility there?
We did not select any property until we came to this one here, and this really marked all the boxes of what we were looking for.
So this is the only town that you actually applied to put your facility in?
Yes, sir.
Well, and typically, I mean, they're going to be allowed in residential zones. The issue is that it's in a commercial zone.
Now, there was, excuse me, Mayor, there was previously a center in Nashville, it was in Madison, it was in a residential area, and that facility had to close due to financial constraints a number of years ago.
Thank you. I think at this time, and Ms. Haumacalli, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think at this time, Mr. McCord and our attorney need to meet, and then I think Mr. McCord is going to have to figure out how to proceed this, proceed forward with this, whether it's through the planning commission, or, I, I don't know, we need, we need to still gather some information. I was briefed on it earlier this week, but I asked for some information that we don't yet have, and so I think.
And we're willing to do whatever needs to be done, but, you know, again, that first meeting was in November, and we're into April now, and so we need to have some sort of idea of moving forward and what it will take, and we're willing to do what it takes. But, you know, our meeting last week really was a 180-degree turn from where we were at in November.
I think if you'll meet, we'll set up a time for you to meet with, I'm the city attorney, Susan Haumacalli, meet with me and Mr. McCord, and then we will probably, I think we're going to have to go through the planning commission, go through that process.
Okay.
And I think we can help you navigate that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition this evening?
Good evening. My name is Patrick Reeners from 317 in Gallatin, Tennessee, Malone Drive. I'm a little nervous, but I just want to show people, first off, this is flour, but it's going to demonstrate 5.12 ounces of toxic waste, which is what's in 16,000 gallons, the average usage of a household in a month. And no citizen can do this to their child. You guys are doing to our citizens what no citizen could ask to do to their own child. They can't do it, just like giving a child beer. You guys don't give children beer, but you actually admittedly add 5.12 ounces of toxic waste per 16,000 gallons, and in 50 gallons of bath water, which parents bathe their children in, they can't get a half a gram of fluoride to put in their own kid's bathtub and put spoonfuls in there and say, hey, I'm going to give you this good fluoride toxic waste. You need it, only the city can give it to you. I think y'all need to relook at that, because now there's federal lawsuits for osteosarcoma causing that, and there's law, law firms that are willing to take that up, and I think you, I'm not going to mention the law firms, but there's other things like adulterating food and water. If someone urinates in someone's coffee, they get a felony, but the city's putting toxic waste in the drinking water, which violates vandalism law. You can look at the vandalism law, you people. Adding the toxic waste to the drinking water is vandalism. So just think about that a little bit. Every, every month, we want to just give, give our children this and help out a little bit. It lowers IQ five points, by the way. If you just want to look it up, just trying to help the citizens again, it's not going away. You guys are still adding it. It costs you about $25,000, $30,000 a year to add it. And by the way, if you want to contact NESHAP, the National Emissions Standards for Hazardous Air Pollution, that's where it comes from. This is the waste to protect the air-water streams. You can quote Dr. William Hershey. You can't put it in the air, you can't put it in the rivers, you can't put it in the streams, you can't put it in the groundwater, but you can put it in the drinking water. Isn't that a great thing? I don't think it is. So please think about that again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeners. Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition this evening? Please come forward at this time if you are.
My name is Joe DeBoer, and I live at 1007 Hart Street, Gallatin, Tennessee. I rise tonight again for another couple, three issues I'd like to share with the council. Number one, we had last week in committee, a issue about a road that's supposed to be up here on 31E North. It's a side road that affects three homes up there. I took the opportunity today to go down that, up and down that road. From what I see in my, in my investigation, that is the state's road, and they need to pick up the tab. And another reason why they should pick it up, too, is because with development in this region as strong as it is, and if we can dig a little money out of the Fed Boys, they ought to be able to forelane that highway all the way to Westmoreland. Therefore, that road would be Newton void, because they're going to have to take a side of that ridge off up there. That is a joke, washed tremendously. So we need to get the Fed Boys cranked up on this stuff. Now, next issue is railroad crossing on Red River Road. I understand we had somebody hang a trailer on it, on it in the last 10 days. We do not need that any tractor-trailer's going to cross that, that railroad, period. It is against federal regulations. Now, does that affect you? No, not really. That's on the state, because that's a state road. We would ask if, if I were doing this, I would ask that the state reroute State Route 174 up through Dorothy Jordan and Blythe to intersect with Albert Gallatin before it hits the bridge. Now, I know it's going to take a while to do this, but I figure if we get started now, maybe in a couple, three years, by the time that bridge and everything's put in up there, we might be able to ask the state to do that. Therefore, they would not have any trucks that go across a railroad track. So now that's for y'all to work on. Sometimes we need to utilize regulations that the federal government has to help us in our community in order to make it a whole lot palatable for us to be able to operate. Now, I have asked Ms. Haumacalli's staff to look at this. I've asked twice. So I think you need to take a look at it. It's through FMCSA rules, therefore you can see that it's right, and therefore you can ask the state to make the change. And that way, if you make the ask and do it, therefore, it makes it a whole more, a whole lot more palatable for them to do so. And we might be able to get a little money up there and fix up Blythe Street. Now, third, Mayor, what ever happened to the light, to the nice sign that was supposed to be out here?
I'm having a second thought about it.
Well, I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you a thought today. We had a truck out there with a man putting the sign with the letters on there. The truck cost about the same amount of money as you would if you put up the sign out there. So it looks to me.
The truck is used for other things.
I understand that, but the man and the truck together cost us the same amount as it would be for a sign, and then you wouldn't have to use the, the man or the truck in order to change it if you put the new in.
We do want a sign. We're working on some newer technology that's not quite so inconsistent with the character of the downtown district.
We understand about what you're doing. You're dragging your feet. Are you? You're dragging your feet.
I don't appreciate that, Mr. DeBoer.
No problem. You're dragging your feet. Now, because we've been out there a year, and one of the things that I have problems with you guys on, you drag your dang feet too much. The problem's not with these people right here behind me, it has to be the people up here that drag their feet so these people can do their work. So let's get cracking. Now, on this water, I got one more thing, and we'll go. On this water business with the wastewater, there have been a lot of people in this community that have been hot to trot with regard to that, because of the cost to certain people. One of the problems that we have with regard to that is we didn't get out in front of it enough to where people didn't put concrete down before they shouldn't have put concrete down. Now, Portland put theirs in a whole lot quicker than we did here. Now, that's the reason why I bring it up to you tonight, because when you get into this business, you can't drag your feet. Now, I understand Brother Hayes has his situation with regard to the deal on the land, and I go along with it, but at the same time, you got to get with the program. By the way, of course, my buddy's not here. I had a, I had a presentation for my buddy back here, so I guess we'll just give it to him one of these years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening under public recognition? Okay, seeing no one, I'll declare public recognition on non-agenda-related items closed. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to close. Motion to adjourn by Councilman Overton, second by Councilwoman Love. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? We are adjourned. Ladies and gentlemen, have a lovely evening, and we will look forward to seeing you again next time. Thank you.